Going to call to order the May 13th meeting of the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee. First item on our agenda is the approval of the last meeting's minutes.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three is posted for consent, but I ask for presentation. So, Rick, did you want to introduce this? This is the MAG dues and assessments for the coming year.
Sure. And Madam Chair and Subcommittee members, Tom Ramis, our Governmental Affairs Director, is here, along with Dennis Smith, who is the head of MAG. And Tom is going to present an overview of the key issues involved in our assessment with MAG and the work that we do with MAG. And then Dennis can, I'm sure, chime in and answer any questions you might have about more of the details.
Right. Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, thank you for having us before you today. We are requesting that the Subcommittee recommend the City Council's approval of the payment of the MAG dues and assessments in an amount not to exceed $182,814. Today I have with me, as Rick mentioned, Dennis Smith, the Executive Director of the Maricopa Association of Governments. And we wanted to share with you why we believe that MAG is critical to all of the functions that the City of Phoenix is involved with, and why our partnership in this regional organization does benefit the community and the state. With that, I just wanted to touch a little bit, I know the Subcommittee does understand MAG, but MAG is very complex. So, for those in the audience today, I also wanted to touch on what is MAG. MAG is both a council of governments, or a COG, and a metropolitan planning organization. Under both of those authorities that come both from the federal government as well as the state government, they have all sorts of regulatory duties and responsibilities that are critical to the City of Phoenix and the region. As we move into what their federal responsibilities are, we look at that they handle water quality issues, they handle transportation issues, air quality and solid waste. And we'll really circle back to transportation and air quality, because I think those are two critical areas for us, to make sure that the economy in this region continues to move because some of the strict regulations that come through the federal government. The state also gives authority to MAG. And some of the things that MAG has done is they actually started the 911 program in this region back in 1985. While the City of Phoenix is the regional operator, MAG still conducts meetings at their organization for all of the 911 agencies in the regions, where they talk about issues, they talk about what they're asking for from the state as they make their budgetary requests. MAG is also responsible for the population estimates and projections for this region. So, as we go through the census process, as we look year to year at our growth patterns and what's happening, MAG coordinates that effort. And then state freeway plans and priorities, as we all know, with all of our freeway systems and street systems, MAG plays a key part of that. In order for projects more than a half mile to be built, they have to be in the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program. Dennis will talk about that a little bit later. But that's everything. That's our streets projects, that's our federal projects, that's our state projects. So even if we're looking to put an arterial street in, we need to be involved with MAG. MAG also has a strong human service program that we'll talk about as well, that Phoenix, our Human Services Department, works very closely with MAG on homeless issues, on heat-related water issues, on planning issues. Other things that the City of Phoenix works closely with MAG on are everything from building codes and specifications. So we want to make sure that our businesses that are coming to work in this region are getting a consistent message. So MAG helps convene that with both the private sector and with all of the local communities, to make sure that we're all talking with one voice, making sure that we're using the same information. MAG also does many things with model ordinances. In the past, have done things for all of the cities and towns in this region on curfews, on graffiti. And then in human services, they also do quite a bit with domestic violence issues, working with our police department, with the courts, talking about that, and homelessness So now to the meat of what MAG does. There's a lot of federal and state funding that comes through the Maricopa Association of Governments that is critical for development in Phoenix. Dennis, I'm not sure if maybe you want to touch on the regional transportation plan, what that is and why it's critical for us.
Well, the federal government requires that we do... The federal government requires that we do three documents. One is the 20-year long-range plan, another one is the five-year capital program called the TIP, and then we have to do the air quality conformity analysis. So, as Tom was saying, if a project is greater than a half mile in length, it's deemed to be regionally significant. And that means that we have to run the models at MAG, and we need to make sure that the emissions that come out of the tailpipe fall below the air quality budget. So we also do the air quality planning in this region, which I think is really an advantage for the economy of this region. If you're in California, there's an air quality district that is doing that air quality planning. We actually do that. We changed the state law to have MAG do it. And so we are coordinating all the transportation projects to make sure they fit underneath a budget in an air quality plan. So that is key. We have passed the conformity test every year since it's been in federal statute. So, if you want to keep the projects moving here, just to give you an idea of those projects, in that five-year capital program, 782 projects totaling $4.43 billion. So this is big business. So in order to do that, we need to hire the best people that we can, and they have engineering degrees, math degrees, they're from very specialists in modeling, and MAG is basically the United Nations. We have 20% of our staff are from another country in order to run all these models. And I had to say, we have probably one of the best modeling teams in the United States.
Moving on from the regional transportation plan, Dennis had touched on the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP. And that's what we talked about, that you need to put projects into the TIP. That's a function of MAG. It's critical for all of our streets programs to continue to keep moving, to be a part of the discussion, be at the table as we are developing the regional transportation plan and the TIP. As mentioned in the slide, you know, in a non-attainment and maintenance areas, the TIP has to have that air quality conformity analysis. And that's what Dennis was saying about, it's critical that we tie together our transportation growth and our air quality. If we go into non-attainment, construction stops. And so it is very key to Phoenix that we are involved in this organization to make sure that we could keep growing and moving forward. This slide talks briefly about the air quality conformity analysis. As we mentioned, that is one of the key pieces for us. I mentioned earlier that MAG does more than just streets and air quality. We do do issues with homelessness. We do talk about domestic violence, aging and community planning, how we start pulling that all together for our residents, about bus routes, about other transit options for them to get around. So it is crucial.
Back on that, Tom, back on that slide, though, you know, a number of those programs were brought to us by the City of Phoenix. So Peggy Bilstein, when she was on your council, you know, when the lady died, couldn't get room in the shelter, she said, "This is more than a Phoenix issue, this is a regional issue." That moved into the MAG process. We're really working with the law enforcement agencies and the courts, like Tom mentioned, to get that protocol so that it's standardized across the valley. So if a woman is running from one city to the next, they know what to expect. And we've had really good success on that, and the homelessness issue.
Just a question on that. You know, we've had this roadmap on addressing domestic violence in the City of Phoenix. Have we worked, has the city worked with MAG at all on that piece?
You've been critical to all of our efforts, you know. And on the aging thing, your mayor is really heavily involved in our aging work. So Phoenix is a big player in all of these human services programs. And a number of these are actually model programs. Homelessness, it's a model with HUD nationally. It's a national program.
Madam Chair, Councilman Gates, talking about the Domestic Violence Council. City of Phoenix puts such an emphasis on our relationship with MAG and MAG programs that we are very involved. We actually have the mayor serving on four committees at MAG. We have the city manager serving on one. We have deputy city manager Neymar serving on another. And we have many of our department heads and key staff serving on all of their different committees. This is an organization that actually works and puts out a good work product that we use back in the city. On domestic violence, we do have our police officers, our human service teams, and all of the city departments that work on those issues, heavily involved in taking our best practices and MAG's best practices, and putting that out into the rest of the region. Just some additional Phoenix benefits, I believe it mentions in your report that we just calculated roughly during fiscal year 2011 through 2015, the city received approximately $117 million through MAG. That's a pretty good return on investment. And I think being at the regional table, talking about the importance of projects in Phoenix is key. Also, I put in here that between fiscal year 2001 and '14, Phoenix received almost $6 million in funds to purchase street sweepers, going back to our air quality issues and where that's very key to make sure that we aren't having dust issues in our community. And then lastly, I wanted to point out, the MAG dues do look large. In past years, MAG has gone and cut the dues by 50%. For the past five years, MAG realized that cities and towns were going through tough budgetary times. And so they said, "We will cut our dues to make sure that communities are taking care of business at home, but once we get to a point, we will raise those dues back to the amount that they were when we started." So this number, 182,000, is actually what our dues were back in 2008, 2009. So we're just going back to the normal rate that we have been paying over the years. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Have questions? No? Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Dennis, for coming on.
Thank you for your support.
Do I have a motion?
I move that our committee recommends the approval of the MAG dues.
Have a second?
Second.
Just before we vote, just had a comment. Obviously, so if I'm reading this correctly, then the dues are doubling for the upcoming year. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Councilman Gates, that is correct. They're going back to their original level before MAG cut the dues by 50%.
Okay. Well, I appreciate MAG's willingness to reduce our dues over the past few years. That's greatly appreciated. Obviously, we're in the middle of a very difficult budget situation. That's why I think it's important that this presentation be made, that people understand the value that we get. I know there's been a lot of talk about different organizations, and we can debate whether we should be paying dues to those. But I think, just for me, just on the non-attainment issue alone, MAG has done so much work, working with the cities within the Valley, working with the chamber, working with the private sector, that without MAG, we could not have been successful in that effort. And as you mentioned, Tom, you know, if that would have gone south, I mean, it could have had a devastating impact on our economy. So I will be voting in favor of it. I'm disinclined to vote in favor of, you know, these types of dues, especially 100% increase, but I think, given the importance of what MAG does, and that was really well presented in this presentation, I will be supportive of it. Thank you.
And I will be supportive. I understand fully that what we are doing is restoring what we paid years ago. And as an organization, long-term loss of income can be devastating to what you do. And with the staff that you have and the expertise on staff, I know it is expensive. So I will be supporting this, because we more than get our money's worth every year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item four is for information only. Did anyone have any questions? Okay, hearing none. We will go to item five, which is Maria Hyatt is going to talk about the proposed bus changes.
Madam Chair, while they're coming up, this is a follow-up to the public involvement process that we've had to get input on some various route changes. And Maria Hyatt is going to talk to you about that process and the results and the recommendations.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. On April 6, we presented you with the information on what routes we were studying for our October 2014 service changes. We then took that out to our community through a series of public house, open houses, and a lot of one-on-one discussions with our passengers. So we'll provide you with updates on that. But I just want to reiterate what our focus here has been. For us, the October 2014 changes are huge. Through this process, we are making significant changes that will help all of our passengers throughout the city, by focusing on our high ridership routes in the core city, as well as creating two new routes. We're very excited. We haven't been able to create two new routes like this in a very long time. We're also eliminating duplicative service. And this is something that, for those of you who have been on the council for a while, have seen us do year after year, is really looking at to make sure that we're not having two routes run on the same streets, if at all possible. Because by doing that, by taking away the duplicative service and still providing our passengers with the way to get to where they're going, maybe it's through a two-seat ride instead of a one-seat ride, we're able to add service where we most desperately need it. And finally, we're also looking at improving our weekend service. I'd like to introduce Joe Bauer. He's our environmental manager, and he's over our planning section, and he'll talk to you today.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. As Maria highlighted, our focus in October is somewhat continued from our focus of January 14, where we looked at high ridership routes, which we experienced overcrowding. We have 11 routes in the Valley that represent 50% of all the ridership in the entire Valley. So they're definitely a high-use corridors. Those high ridership routes are on Van Buren, McDowell, Thomas, Indian School, and 35th Avenue. We also will be creating two new routes on 75th Avenue and 83rd Avenue in the West Valley. We want to create efficiencies, as Maria again highlighted, on the duplicative service. And that would be on Route 15, which is 15th Avenue, and then Washington-Jefferson, the Central Station, and Route 106, which runs from Sun City to the Paradise Valley Mall on Peoria and Cactus. We'd like to align a couple of our routes to our grid. Phoenix in the Valley is very fortunate. We have a lot of east-west, north-south arterial streets that serve a grid system for transit very well. We will align Route 10, which essentially runs from Camelback and 32nd at Camelback High School, all the way down to 22nd Avenue in Lower Buckeye. We will eliminate a segment between Central Station and Lower Buckeye to take it out of the residential neighborhood where it stair-steps through and align to the grid. Route 138, which is on Thunderbird, and we would use that in conjunction with our duplicative service proposal for Route 106. And then we want to increase the frequency on Route 1, which would serve from Central Station to Priest and Washington on Washington Street. It'd serve the ABEL Bridge Independent Living facility, and give them 30-minute frequency service from the current 45. We would eliminate the west half of Route 1 from Central Station to 27th Avenue at that point. And then finally, we want to do increased weekend service from 60 minutes to 30 minutes, which would be the first time since the Great Recession, as they say. So we'll have routes that we're targeting to increase the frequency from 60 minutes to 30 minutes. On our high ridership routes, this photo shows Thomas Road early in the morning. I see a lot of school kids going to school, and as it says, it's a 36-seat bus with 65 people on that bus. And this is very common on our high ridership routes that we are focusing on. And this continues our efforts from January 14, where we did Routes 19 and 50, which is 19th Avenue and Camelback. So we want to do, we did detailed analysis of the ridership, defined a segment where we can increase the frequency, and we're applying that increased frequency during the, in the high ridership segment, in order to help with the overcrowding. For us in service planning, this is one of those times where we're always happy to put new service out on the streets. 75th Avenue and 83rd Avenue in the West Valley, we're proposing on Route 75 from Lower Buckeye to Camelback, and on 83rd Avenue from Van Buren to Camelback. Those would both serve the Desert Sky Mall Transit Center. And those routes, as you can see, 75th Avenue has eight cross-connecting routes, so it's a good grid piece of the puzzle. And Route 83 would have six transfer points of east-west routes. We did our public outreach for a little over a month. There were open house meetings, a public hearing. And then at Phoenix, we like to go out to the transit centers and on the routes and talk to the people, because it's much more personal. And they sometimes feel better talking to you specifically. And we get a lot more contact with the public this way, and get their feedback. And we like to be able to help them if their route is one of the routes that we're proposing changes, to hear their concerns, try to give them options for alternatives to their, to get to their destination. And we had nearly 500 comments and contacts, and over 90% were positive.
Which, I'm just going to interject, compares to, when we did the January 2014 service changes, we had 67% positive comments on the system changes. So this really just shows how focusing your service in the core areas to improve it, and adding new routes west of 67th Avenue, where we haven't had those routes in the past, and we're really hoping that this sets the stage on the 75 and the 83, to work with Peoria and Glendale, to extend those routes further north in the future. But this is a great start. One of the things that I wanted to talk about with Joe is that when we've received those comments from the community, and they've indicated that they are not in favor, and sometimes they don't give us the full reason. And so whenever possible, staff has made contact with those folks, if at all possible, to kind of walk them through, "Here, where are you going? Where do you start, and where are you going? And let's see if we can find a better route." Because a lot of times, they have in their mind that this is the only way to get there. And I really think that that's not always the case. We do have other ways to make it more efficient. Another thing that I wanted to interject, too, is that we will be providing real-time data on our bus, the next bus coming, and it'll be effective prior to these October service changes. For those routes that are going from potentially a one-seat ride to a two-seat ride, they'll be able to use this data to better time that connecting route as another efficiency for them.
So, the bottom line, these are route-by-route costs for these changes. And as Maria mentioned, in January, we realized over $310,000 in savings, which we indicated our desire to apply that to our October changes, mainly because we were focusing on those high ridership routes on Van Buren, McDowell, Thomas, and Indian School, and 35th Avenue. So the net, if you use our credit from January, we're still going to save $90,000 on these service changes. And, you know, this was a very intense period for us, and a lot of analysis to get to this So, members of the Subcommittee, we are asked, we're here today to ask you to approve our recommendations for service changes to be effective October 27 of 2014.
Okay. I have some cards. Shall we have the cards and then go for questions? Okay. Tom O'Brien? Well, he's in favor. Howard?
Is this on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning. I was at the Citizen Transit Commission meeting two weeks ago about this. And staff has my comments on the 75 and 83, which I'm happy about. The Route 1, Route 3 switchback should, I'm happy about that. I know a bunch of people at ABEL are, too. And I know that that shouldn't have ever been done the first time. It should have been the way it is going to be now. Because I know when you guys switched the 3 down to Washington, it probably affected them. But one of the things that I'm not in favor of, I'm in favor of most of the things, but I'm concerned about the 15 Route 10 down in South Phoenix. Some of your people that take, and the 10, that take the 10 east and west and go from, say, 32nd Street and go downtown. A lot of you people like the one bus, "Hey, I can catch the Rose Bowl, I can get to downtown and get dropped off somewhere in this spot." And so you're going to have a lot of kickback on that segment. I'm also not in favor of the 106 Thunderbird switch. Been noticing a lot of cuts to Sunny Slope and Paradise Valley Mall area. I understand, I talked to staff about this, but you may want to review some of that. I know they're in the process of reviewing some of that now, because some people, again, the one-bus thing versus the two-bus. So, but I'm happy about the 75 and 83. Just gotta, when you make new changes, you've got to double-check the bus stops on the new routes. Because I know a few places where there's no bus stops, and summer's getting ready to hit us, and people are going to get stuck with no bus stop, no shelter, out in the sun, no shade. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions? Councilwoman?
One of the questions is, how are we communicating to the bus riders of all the changes? And when are the changes going into effect?
So the changes for October would be in effect October 27 of '14. And prior to those changes, we start a series of onboard bus announcements, directing people to go to either our department website or valymetro.org website to get a list of those. Plus, we go out again to the transit centers, and sometimes intersections dependent on the change, and go out and reach out to the people at those locations to let them know that these changes are forthcoming.
You can, they also, we also point on the bus announcements to have them call. So not everybody has access to a computer. We also provide the customer service on the 253-5000 number, where they can get information on any route changes.
And do we do it at, also at the, I haven't ridden a bus in a long time, but at the stops? Is there any type of signage that we put there of bus routes, changes?
Not at the stops directly. We have over 4,000 bus stops, so it gets, it's a little bit hard, plus anything that we post tends to get vandalized. So, you know, that becomes an issue for us. And we find, really, the most effective tool we have is the onboard bus announcements.
Okay. And then my second question is about 15th Avenue. So it's going to be extended to Pima Street, all the way down to 15th Avenue, but it's no longer going to the Central Station.
That is correct.
I am aware of a constituent that is concerned of this. And so my question, or the question I asked staff was, how long will it now take her to get to work? And what are the bus routes she needs to take in order to get to work? Because I guess now she's going to have to take two routes.
Madam Chair, if, we'd love to have that contact with the person, and we'll be able to follow back up to be able to help them route.
Okay.
Most efficiently.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
I believe, Tom O'Brien, did you want to speak?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. The only thing I'd like to speak on is the 138, the extension especially towards the west. It's my feeling that the West Valley is underserved by our bus system. And I think this is, this extension on the 138 is wonderful. It'll allow me to get as far as, I think, 105th Avenue on Thunderbird, which will be a big boon to me. I like the fact that we got, we have two more proposed north-south routes in 83rd and 75th. Those will be wonderful, and they'll even be better when they extend further north than Camelback. Those will be wonderful and they'll even be better when they extend further north than Camelback. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor?
Yes. I agree with Mr. O'Brien and Howard as well that it's good that we are doing better service in the southwest portion of our city because I hear, well, in the west portion. But I am in the southwest portion more often and have heard a lot of requests for more service. So that is great news, as is Sunday service. Having spent a few months this year without a car and trying to get around on Sunday, it requires an amount of, an impressive amount of planning skills to be able to get somewhere in a timely manner. And so this will be great news and I think will make people very happy. I'm also very excited about the high ridership routes, many of which are in District Eight. And we hear often from people, occasionally, I can't get my bike on the bus, there's no room for me. So thank you for your work in this area. We also do hear from some folks on the holiday schedule and that some of the holidays that we observe on the transportation side do not align with the holidays that people actually work, particularly folks in the retail world. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the holiday schedule and any possibility of restoring some frequency of service on holidays.
Madam Chair, we are currently in discussion with the Regional Public Transit Association with all of the different cities. The holidays were increased several years back as a cost-saving measure. But we're currently reviewing each one of those days to see what the ridership is, to see if there's opportunities to decrease the number of holiday schedules, especially on those that we have high demand on. We'd be happy to come back to either you or to the subcommittee to respond back with those discussions and the results.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. That's it. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the presentation. I would agree with Howard's concerns that there have been a lot of reductions made in the Sunny Slope area. We've seen that now repeatedly. Had some concerns from constituents on that. I'm happy to hear that they're not losing service, but they're going to have to make that transfer. And I am concerned about that. I feel like we're shifting a lot of resources. I think that's good. Other areas that are underrepresented are getting more transit service, but I'm concerned. I hope we don't continue to see this in the Sunny Slope area. A lot of changes have been made already. And I know we had talked earlier about you doing everything that you can to limit the length of, you know, delay there for the folks who are going to have to get off the bus and transfer at the Cave Creek-Cactus intersection. So if we can stay in touch on that and utilizing the new technology to limit those as much as possible, that would certainly be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I have had questions about the Thirty-Fifth Avenue. That if you had more service, you would have more riders. And so I, for the rest of the changes, I want to echo what they said about the bus stops. We still have so many bus stops that really do not have shelters. And I am always concerned about that when I see people standing out there in the sun. I can't sit, no shade. So I think we really need to re-inspect where we have these shelters and make sure that we are addressing the needs of the public. So, do I have a motion? Oh, I guess we're not. Are we making action? No. Yes, we are. To recommend this to the full council, to make these changes that could be effective October twenty-seventh. I know we've heard this several times. It has gone through our commission, our transit commission, and has gone through the RPTA. So, okay, I'm not looking bored, I just heard it about four times, so. Fakely familiar here. Do I have a motion? Send this forward to council.
I move that item fifteen moves forward to council. Do I need to read it out? The proposed bus service changes?
It's not fifteen, it's item.
Item five, I meant. Item five.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Halt. Motion carries. Thank you very much for the presentation. Item six, not an action item, but I asked that they come and give us an update and talk about what's going on. And it's generated a lot of interest.
Madam Chair and subcommittee members, as you know, our downtown has grown and changed in many different ways over the last twenty-five years or so. And particularly in the last five or six years, there's been a lot of change happening. And this study that we're here to talk about today is really an effort to address the transportation needs and integrate them with the changes that have been made in downtown and update them to make sure that our streets are responding in the right way to all of the changes in the downtown area. And so we embarked on a very engaged process to seek input and try to evaluate all the different possibilities that might be out there in terms of how we might have the transportation network respond to the evolving downtown that we've witnessed. And so Ray Dovellina and Mark Melnchenko have, particularly Mark, have been out in the community a lot, working with folks, and we had a consulting team working with us. And they're here to report our preliminary results. We still intend to gather a little more input before we come to final council approval and do plan to come back to, I think it'll be the downtown subcommittee in June and then hopefully final council approval sometime in June or sometime thereafter of proposed changes. So I'll turn it over to these guys and they can kind of walk you through what the process has been and also what the preliminary identified strategies are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Madam Chair and committee members, we're here today to just provide an update on this comprehensive study that we've been working on for the last nine months. It's a collaborative effort with American Association of Governments. They're not only helping us with this, but also a funding partner for this project and this study. And so we do want to acknowledge them as being a great partner with us. Also with us in the audience, we have Dan Maron with Wilson &amp; Company. That he is the project manager from the consultant team, working with Mark Melnchenko, the city project manager. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark and he can do the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members. If we, we'll go to the first slide. If we look at really what the three primary goals of this effort were. First of all, not necessarily just moving traffic, but we're looking at moving people. There are the inclusion of bikes, ASU, a stronger pedestrian element downtown. So it was all-inclusive of moving people. In addition, we also looked at how these strategies could also enhance economic development downtown. There are a number of new uses, interest from ASU, a law school, in addition to the south of the railroad tracks. There's also additional hotels and other interests in the downtown area. So we wanted to make sure that these improvements linked to an enhanced economic development environment. In addition, the third one would be to identify possible changes to the downtown transportation network that reflects this ever-evolving downtown. We're looking at in the future additional rail lines coming into downtown. What do we need to look at in the downtown to make sure that we're addressing the overall transportation network in the downtown area? We, as Ray said, we began this process in August of two thousand thirteen. And we also have gone through an extensive public outreach process. I'll touch base a little bit further on into the presentation. And so this scope of work for this project looked at Seventh Avenue to Seventh Street, McDowell Road to Buckeye Road as our study area. And so what we did was looked at existing conditions as well as how these projects would tie into the future transportation network. And so with that, we also linked our efforts with other projects that are underway. There's a list of projects here, all the way from the Bike Master Plan, which played a key role in this effort, the Bike Share, Complete Streets. There's also Roosevelt Street Improvements. So there are other projects that are programmed and will be underway. And it was very important to make sure that the strategies outlined in this plan link to these efforts that were underway. We also, to be honest, we also talked with ADOT and touched base with them even on their future light rail or rail passenger program in the rail corridor, how can we tie into that in the future? So really, there were no stones unturned in the projects that we looked at as well as the output in the community, input from the community. The planned process can be summarized in this way. We began the process getting feedback from the community in a series of focus groups that we held in September. The focus groups were geared towards specific interests. They may have been the residents of the downtown and surrounding areas, downtown business owners, or parking interests are three examples. We gathered feedback from them on some of the strategies, some of the needs, some of the wants of what they saw and would like to see in the downtown area. From those strategies, we built a series of scenarios where we began to piece together what three distinct scenarios and downtown timeframes from zero to five, from six to ten years, and then the long range. From that also, we looked at specific areas. We had specific topics. An example was we looked at a Fifth Street rail turnaround between Washington and Jefferson. That was one of the special topics that the project looked at. We gathered feedback from city staff as well as Valley Metro. And we elected from that study to continue with our turnarounds at McKinley as well as the emergency on Eleventh Street. After the special topics, which was also put into the mix, we put together a series of phased improvements, which use the strategies and the scenarios and the input from the special topics and put those into the three timeframes. If we touch base a little bit more on the public outreach process, it was really a three-tiered process. We went first with the stakeholder groups in September. We built a series of scenarios and then held two public open houses in November of thirteen. From then, we also held a public workshop at the NACTO conference that was held here in October, which we really got a lot of feedback from other cities which are really undergoing some of the same transformation and have a lot of the same issues. So it was interesting getting feedback from Sacramento, from Las Vegas, and some other area communities. From that, we, throughout the process, we held meetings with downtown stakeholders, residents, business interests, as well as city management and other leaders and all from the city. We also, from that standpoint, we held our second series of open houses in February, where again, we gathered feedback from a wide range of interests in the downtown area. The email list that we used to spread the information out was, we used the Central Phoenix Framework Study email list, which was broader. It went from the one-oh-ones all the way down to Pickles Road. So we used that email to get even a broader input into the project. And with that, after the input that we received in February from the open houses, we began, we continued to build off that information and also held numerous meetings with downtown committees and other stakeholders to get their feedback. These are some examples of some of the strategies that were brought out from the focus groups. And we used a number of these in the improvements that we brought forward. The identified strategies, as we discussed previously, were outlined for years zero to five, six to ten, and then long-range efforts. Some of the commonalities in feedback from citizen input, you can see the, there's a strong emphasis from the public feedback, from the bicycle community. And what we tried to do was implement the, one of the, the main corridors in the plan was Third Street, which goes through downtown and it also connects all the way up to Indian School. What we tried to do is link this with downtown ASU efforts, south of the railroad tracks, the downtown core, Roosevelt Street improvements, as well as the future Third Street promenade. And even the efforts that have undergone with the Reinvent Phoenix, which would tie into the northern part of Third Street. So we tried to make that link with many of these corridors. As you can see, we also received feedback from the downtown sports district stakeholders and their concerns. And many times we, I mean, I think everyone understands that this study area includes different interests and also a lot of diverging feedback. What we tried to do was really strike a balance on our efforts and make sure that everybody's voice was included in these plans. We go to the Phase One Identified Strategies. The key improvements that we had outlined in years zero to five was again, the transformation of Third Street and Fifth Street from one-way to two-way. It also is the number-one corridor outlined in the Bike Master Plan from the city of Phoenix. And so we wanted to link those efforts in year zero to five. In addition, on the, between the sevens in downtown on Washington and Jefferson, there is kind of a, there's an area where bike, the bike lanes are not connected through the downtown. And so that is also, in our efforts in years zero to five, is to make sure those connections are made through the downtown area for bicycles and include those in our infrastructure. If we look at, this is a very interesting graphic showing the transportation or really the transit system in downtown. There is a strong regional spine for bus activity up Central Avenue, Washington-Jefferson up Central Avenue, as well as in the future, which we took into consideration, a future light rail line coming from the south, from Baseline Road, tying into the downtown core, as well as from the east, or from the west, coming ultimately from Seventy-Ninth Avenue and I-ten through the Capitol into the downtown area. So all of these elements really play a key role in how we came up with the improvements outlined in the three scenarios.
Madam Chair and subcommittee members, I just want to emphasize this slide for you. One of the things that is really going to change in the future for downtown, we hope anyway, with successful, you know, extension of funding for light rail and additional bus service is our downtown will become even a more robust transit network. And it really has a huge impact on the availability of space in the right-of-way for other uses. And so, you know, we're not just thinking about the changes that have already occurred, but we're thinking about the changes that we plan to have occur, to occur in the transit sphere. And so this slide is perhaps one of the most important inputs that none of us have really digested yet. But ultimately, there's going to be a lot of trains and a lot of buses coming through this central area. And so we have to prepare for that and calculate that into our thinking as we move forward.
In discussions with Valley Metro Rail, when the other lines are implemented, we're looking at Washington and Jefferson and Central, a train every two to three minutes. So it will have an interesting, I think we look at it as a very, very positive effect as Ray, or as Rick brought up. In addition, there's also some streetscape improvements that we're looking at in future phases. You can see Central Avenue, it is a regional bus connection. And so people are waiting for the bus in the sidewalk. And it's really not an area right now that is conducive to expansion of regional transportation system as well as the walkability in downtown. So that's one of the areas. So that's one of the areas that we're looking at in the plans is to make this street, um, especially on the east side, bump out the sidewalk and make it more accessible to transit as well as, um, the downtown pedestrian, pedestrians. The strategies outlined in six to ten, now we're getting into, um, some very interesting proposals. The, um, input from the community, the, the sevens are really gateways into downtown. And they are regional connections to the freeway. But what, uh, was brought up, uh, from the community and even downtown stakeholders is when people come in towards downtown, they really don't know they're entering the downtown. Maybe some gateway features or a sense of place coming into downtown. There are various strategies that could be used. But sevens, uh, would, would be very, very, um, important in moving, um, that, uh, identification of downtown forward. And so we've outlined areas on the sevens between, um, Roosevelt and Washington as areas where we could enhance the pedestrian environment. There are numerous uses already in place along Seventh Street with the museums, with the bio campus. And so those are two strategies that we would like to move forward. In addition, with the, uh, the future rail activity, we would begin to look at Central Avenue. How can we, um, a- attempt to include all of this, uh, transit activity as well as the, uh, additional uses? There's, uh, um, other hotels and all that will be included in the, the Central Avenue corridor. And so we're looking at possibly repurposing, um, Central Avenue, include limited access for vehicles. But, uh, its emphasis would be primarily transit-oriented. And so we also would, um, improve, as I said on the previous slide, the pedestrian environment and tie it possibly into the Adams Street reactivation, which is also showed on the slide. In addition, we, uh, talked about the gateways and also the tie into the Third Street promenade to the north. That would be a, a great connection to what we had proposed on Third and Fifth Street, um, in the previous timeframe. The phase three strategies would move Central Avenue, uh, fully into the, the transit mode. We would include, um, limited access for the businesses, for the Summit Parking Garage, the future hotels, deliveries. It's very difficult to fully implement a, a transit mall. And we understand that we need to, to keep a, a limited access for vehicles. Uh, a, a lot of that traffic, uh, shown here could be moved over to First Street. Prior, also prior to, uh, coming into downtown, I think we believe that a lot of that traffic would also be dispersed into the network prior to coming downtown, which we talked about the impacts of, uh, some of the signalization and moving through downtown. So, uh, from our perspective, we would look at, um, limiting the amount of, of, uh, straight flow through downtown, but still remain, uh, keep, uh, access for businesses. In addition, um, Third and Fifth Avenues are, are very important right now for regional bus service because they make connections to the direct HOV ramps on I-ten. We also understand it's very important for that portion of the downtown, the community and the business owners, um, and their desires to move that ahead in, in the projected schedule. We understand that. There are items though, that we would need to work with ADOT as well as the, um, Public Transit Department in modifying the regional traffic of buses, making those connections. That can be done, and I think that's part of our further discussion with transit as well as ADOT and what are the improvements? And how can we move the Third and Fifth Avenue from, uh, one-way to two-way forward, um, in the schedule?